May 23rd, this is a regular meeting of the Revere School Committee. Please rise to pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Role call to members.
Mr. Ferenti.
Here.
Ms. Gravellisi.
Here.
Mr. McGuire.
Here.
Mrs. Rizzo.
Here.
Mr. Sinella.
Here.
Ms. Ty.
Here.
Mayor Arigo.
Here. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We're going to begin tonight's meeting by celebrating a lot of awesome kids from Revere. Many of them are here with us today. We have four separate areas to give out awards in. The first is going to be our Region Four Middle School Science Fair. And I'm going to ask Dr. Mokaba Bernado if she could actually go to the podium to call the students up for their awards. But as she's getting ready to do that, I just want to say, you know, one of the highlights of my job is being able to celebrate the great work that the kids do. It always amazes me how creative and innovative they are, and I just, it really makes my heart full to think of what their futures are going to hold with all of the work that they do. And I know that the committee appreciates that too, which is why we wanted to celebrate them here tonight. One thing that's for sure is these kids would not be as successful as they are if it weren't for their parents and their family members who help them at home and give them the opportunity and the time and the space to do the kind of work that they do. So we're just incredibly, incredibly proud of all of you. And I'm going to ask that as Dr. Mokaba reads your name, you come up and receive your certificate, and then I know the committee members are going to shake your hand, and we'll go one grouping at a time, so we'll do the Region Four Middle School Science Fair first. We'll take a moment to have a picture with those folks, and then we're going to move on to the High School Science Fair, followed by the Arts Achievement Awards. We have a lot of kids who got Arts Achievement Awards in a variety of different areas, different showings all over the state. It's just incredible what these kids do. And then last but certainly not least, we're going to celebrate the accomplishments of our robotics team, which also has traveled not only around the state but around the country to receive their awards in various competitions, so. So if you leave here with one message tonight, please leave with the message that you guys are amazing. The world is yours. Reach out and grab it, okay? So we'll start, Dr. Mokaba, with the science fair, Middle School Science Fair.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. The first two students recognized are Sidney Ciano and Sarah Reyes for their second-place project, Bio Bags Part Two: Decomposing Colors. Joseph Canisi, second place, World of Rockets. Nicholas Girasev, second place, Viscosity and Its Effects on the Time It Takes Substances to Move. And, oh, thank you. One note about Nicholas, he just found out this week that he qualified for the National History Fair. Sophia Garcia, second place, It's Waving at You: Cell Phone Radiation. Jenny Pitch, third place, Watercolor: Light Fastness. And Naomi DiMaro, honorable mention.
So our next grouping, our next grouping, and we'll have fewer kids coming up this time because the competition is absolutely fierce at the high school level, but we do have a few kids who we're going to honor for their accomplishments at the high school-level Science Fair.
Michael De La Russo. Michael just received second at the state competition this. Now we're moving on to the art awards.
So as I mentioned before, we have a number of students who are receiving arts awards tonight. They earned their awards in a variety of different places and for a variety of different kinds of artwork. Some of the kids that we're going to honor right now have received awards for their photography, others for their painting, others for chalk drawings, and all different pieces of work. But as important as our STEM and our humanities topics are, some people forget how important the visual arts are, and all arts for that matter. So we really are working in the Revere Public Schools to embrace more of a STEAM philosophy than a STEM philosophy, and that's so that we can make sure that the arts are honored and valued as much as all of the other disciplines that we study in our schools. Dr. Mokaba.
Vivian Voe. Larissa Leonel Sores. Manuela Trujillo Ruiz.
Okay, so our last group of awards is for our robotics team, the Neutrons, who work with other districts near and around Boston. I'm going to ask that their faculty advisor, Josh Miranda, come up and just say a few words because he can do a lot more justice to the incredible work these kids have done than I can.
So we competed across the country this year. We started off in Florida and almost came away with a win there, and then came up back to New England and competed here at the high school. We actually hosted a competition, competed two more times, were going on to the district championships where we won the district, or the district chairman's award. It was the first time we've won that award, and it was a huge accomplishment. Then we went on to the St. Louis World Championship where we won our division as the Alliance captains, also the first time we've ever done that in the history of the team, and went on to the finals, came in fourth in the World Championship there. So incredibly proud of the kids we have, excited because we have a bunch of young kids too, so hopefully good future to the team. Also want to acknowledge our other, our partner schools, Boston Latin School, Brooklyn High School, and Urban Science Academy, as well as all the mentors, including quite a few alumni of RHS, which is awesome, and the professional mentors who give countless hours to their kids every year.
And I think that one thing that I would just add is, one of the things that's incredible about this robotics program is that the kids at the high school who participate in the Neutrons actually mentor the middle school kids and do a robotics program with them and engage them. So it really is about the community, it's about everybody, it's about sharing the knowledge and sharing the work, and these kids are going to be so incredibly set for what the future brings them, it's very, very bright.
Andreas Leonard Calcano.
We're back, and we're going to go to our next agenda item, which is the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So the first item on a superintendent's report I'm really, really excited for, and once again, we get to feature the fabulous work of our students who wouldn't be able to do the great work they do without the support of their parents and their teachers. And what we're going to feature today is the Paul Revere Schools Project-Based Learning Program that they do in all grades, kindergarten through grade five. And the kids spend all year working on their projects, which will culminate in a public showing of their projects, which hopefully the folks here and the folks at home will be able to attend on Thursday, June 1st, from 3:00 till 5:00 at the Paul Revere School. Mrs. Kelly, did you want to say a few words, or?
Is the stool quiet? Yeah. I need it. No, I just want to put the children on, they're probably past their bedtime, a couple. But we're so proud of them, the whole school, and naturally we invite you all to come. This is only a sampling. We have one student representing each grade level, so that you would get a whole view of what the school does. And we're going to start with kindergarten.
Okay, do we want to put the microphone down in front of you?
I have a stool here.
Oh, you do? Oh, okay, all right. She is prepared.
Hello, my name is. Hello, my name, what's happening?
You're going to.
Hello, my name is Chiana Combs.
Yep, you don't have to be as close, but go ahead. Are you are happy?
I am so happy.
I know you are. So look at the pictures, and remember, you're in, tell them what you're doing, what project base you're doing, what is kindergarten doing?
Community workers.
Right, and what are some of the things that you did this year?
We made little books that had all community workers in them.
And who were some of the community workers that came to visit you?
Ambulances.
Yep, we had two ambulance.
Uh huh.
Who else? The custodian?
The custodian Steve.
And what did he talk about?
What his job was at our school.
And who else came? Did someone else from this panel come? Who else came?
Mayor Arigo.
Right, and what did Mayor Arigo do when he visited?
Tell us about his job.
Right. And what was some of the other things that you're learning about the community workers? What are you tracing?
Our bodies.
For what?
To know what we want to be when we grow up.
In what?
What do you think I want to be when I grow up?
Show them. So, the mayor of the city.
Whoa, this thing's on wheels? This thing's on wheels.
It is on wheels, but you did a good job catching me in the bin.
Okay.
So did you tell them what you made Friday at school? What'd you make in the cafeteria?
Pizzas.
And they're doing a community walk through the neighborhood, and we have very generous partners and building partnerships with all the community stores, and they're going to have lunch at, where are you going to have lunch, do you know? They're going to have, on the boat, they're going to have lunch that are paying, the kindergarten students will all have lunch on the boat. So thank you.
Hello, my name is Catherine Aiborn, and for project-based, we're learning about animals. In first grade, we put on a play, we built a bald eagle's nest, we made jellyfish, and we made animal patterns.
What was some of the, what was your animal that you did?
My animal was an arctic fox and.
Anything you remember about the arctic fox?
It followed polar bears to get food.
What's on your classroom door? What are you making right now?
A tree with camouflage moths on it.
Right, so we invite, you can come find all the moths. Thank you, Catherine.
Hello, my name is Gabrielle Ram Sharon, and in second grade, we made flat stan leaf projects about, and we were learning about where they went. A continent that, a continent that some of them went to were Europe, and I will tell you about a place that is in Europe called France. The first fact I have about France is the Maestro is a wind that can blow so hard it damages fields and crops. These are six landmarks in France, Eiffel Tower, Notre Dame de Paris, Arc de Triumph, Palace of Versailles, Mount Saint Michael, and French Riviera.
And can you tell us what you did for the life cycles?
And we did animal habitat projects in second grade, and I chose the hammerhead shark as my animal so that I could research about. And a fact about the hammerhead shark is that it, the front of its head is like a hammer, is shaped like a hammer, and the hammerhead sharks eat other hammerhead sharks.
Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, my name is George Washington, and third grade's like, project-based learning is on life cycles in the American Revolution. In third grade, we had a visit from the Paul Revere House, and we acted out Paul Revere's ride and what happened during it. We also were observing the life cycles of a mealworm, and in the end, it turned into a beetle. We were also in the middle of the year creating lizard habitats, and some were desert lizards and some were forest lizards. We also were observing the growth of lima beans, pinto beans, black beans, and grass seeds. And a couple of facts about George Washington are his teeth weren't wooden, he had dentures made of ivory. His wife and friends called him general, and he was six feet tall. And I'm not George Washington, I'm actually Zachary Gwapa.
Hello, I'm an immigrant from Italy. Just kidding. My name is Mia Angelina De Beau, and in fourth grade, project-based, we are learning about immigrants. One of the projects we've been working on are our "I Am From" poems. They're basically poems that describe us and our culture. Another thing is our immigration notebooks, where we write about the Statue of Liberty, Ellis Island, Angel Island, and others, and other stories about immigration. We also role-played going through Ellis Island. It was fun, but it took a while, and we realized that this is exactly what happened when other people immigrated. They also had clerks, doctors, money exchangers, and security guards. Last but not least is our quilts. One piece of paper, on a piece, on the piece of paper, we wrote down what described us, what is one goal, and what we want to do and go, where we want to go. And I wanted to go to Hawaii. Thank you.
Giancarlo, I don't think you need the stool. Nope. He's troweling to me.
Good evening. My name is Giancarlo Go, and I'm in the fifth grade. And in the fifth grade, for PBL, we are doing a tour of Massachusetts history. For our first unit, we were studying the Wampanoag tribe. We created murals and clothing, we created games and the play. I was in the instruments group, and we had to create instruments that they would have used. I made this drum, and another group made a rainstick. Our next unit was about colonial Boston. We learned about how they protested and how they wanted freedom. We made clothing, an ABC book, another play, a commercial, and games they would have used. I was in the commercial group, and we made a commercial about Massachusetts and why the colonists should come. And our last unit, which we're working on this week, is modern-day Boston. I am currently making a Jeopardy game about it, and we're going to be asking questions for the Jeopardy game, and that's our PBL. Don't, don't, don't forget to come to our project-based learning exhibit, June 1st, 3 to 5.
Excellent job, Mrs. Kelly. And I want to acknowledge Mrs. Quirk is here as well, too, the assistant principal. And you kids did a phenomenal job. I personally cannot wait until June 1st to actually see these projects up front and close and see the commercial that you guys talked about and all the other work that you've done. Nice work.
We're gonna take a two-minute recess. We're back. We're going to go back to the superintendent's report.
I'd like to make a motion to go out of order and take, uh... Be under new business, please. Do I have a second?
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, be under new business is... Presentation of a gift of $5,000 to the Garfield Elementary School, presented by Priscilla Nickerson. And per state law, we have to approve the... Or accept the donation, so...
Mr. Mayor, if I could just for a minute?
Dr. Kelly.
So, I was thrilled to meet Ms. Nickerson at an event at this... Actually, in the city council chambers. We were talking about the redesign of the roadwork going on down at the Garfield School, or impending, I should say, that's coming up from Mass DOT in the next year. And as a concerned and active community member, Ms. Nickerson was present at that meeting. And it was then that she asked what would be the protocol or what were the ways that she could arrange to have a donation made to the Garfield Elementary School specifically for student field trips. And of course, I thanked her first for her incredible generosity. We're always thrilled to have anybody assist our students in any way that they can and encourage her to come to the school committee meeting as is recognized by school committee policy that a gift so large should be recognized here and put before you for a vote.
Need a roll call?
Yes.
Any other members? No? Roll call?
Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sennella?
Definitely yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Priscilla, would you like to say a couple words, or please?
Good evening. I am on the Garfield Elementary School Improvement Board. And one of the goals with Mr. Koots, the principal, is to raise money for children to go on field trips and other things to make school, you know, fun. So, I had reached out to a few people that I, you know, that I know. And we've made great progress raising funds. And this actually came from... I have to say, I can't take the total credit, my husband helped me. But this actual $5,000 donation came from the Mark Wahlberg Foundation. And they have Casino Night once a year at the Tuxbury Country Club. And a good friend of my husband and I raise... Raises him a lot of money, I think he's up to like 1.2 million. So, we needed 10,000 this year. And for asking for the first year, I said, "I don't wanna be greedy, so let's ask for half." So, we asked for $5,000. And within probably a couple of weeks, they said yes. And in a couple of weeks, we'll be receiving a check for $5,000.
So, if I can just say, on behalf of the entire Garfield School community, thank you, Priscilla. You've been a great addition to the School Improvement Council. You've worked tirelessly to help support our goals and to meet the needs of our students and families. So, thank you so much for all you've done.
Thank you, it's really been fun.
Motion to go back to regular order of business.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor, all opposed? That brings us back to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the next item on the superintendent's report is just about a 90-second clip. It's a bit of a teaser or a trailer for the new movie that our Filmic Society at Riviere High School has spent the last year working on. And the movie is going to premiere at Showcase Cinema on May 30th and 31st. So, just to, um... Whet the appetite for the school committee and the viewers, we'll show this clip. If it's gonna come up.
Why do you have to be this house? This house? You mean the house that I grew up in? I hate that my mom died, that I'm stuck with you? I hate this! Look, I can't do this right now. Can you give me any information on Riviere High? Hi. You must be Heaven. What kind of name is Heaven? Are you like, really religious or something? I didn't want any of this. I didn't want this, and I didn't want you! Look, this is getting way out of hand, and I just think you need to tell somebody. Mr. Larson, can I ask you a question? You're telling me there was a murder here? And we're just gonna overlook it? How is this any of your business? I lost my mom. My old life. I... I lost who I was. Until I learned her story.
Is that not intriguing? So, I think they've done a great job. And it's a full-length feature film, which, as I said, will premiere on May 30th and again on May 31st at the Showcase Cinema in Riviere. The kids and their advisors and their counselors and the Filmic Society have done a tremendous job. I think even just watching the trailer, it feels like you're watching a real... It is a real movie, I don't know why I say that, but... It feels like a Hollywood production, I think, but so... Hopefully, folks can get a chance to get out and see that. If you can't, then we'll be finding a way to get the video... Get the movie posted on our channel or on our website.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Mrs. Gravellisi?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Arigo. Dr. Kelly, do you know what time the movie is premiering? Or will it be posted like in the movie theater listings?
It is posted. It's actually in this week's Riviere Journal. I believe there's a reception at 7 o'clock, and the movie will start at 7:30. I should check that. Alright, the next item on the superintendent's report is the Food Services Contract Extension. And just for the benefit of the committee and the folks at home, this is gonna be our third extension of the current food contract service agreement with Aramark. So, it's... We're by law entitled to do a three-year... One-year extension three times. So, this'll be the last time we can do that. And, you know, I think all of the committee members who've worked on these food service contract provider agreements in the past will be looking to convene another committee, starting around November or December of this year, in order to either form a successor agreement with Aramark or find another partner for our food services program. I know that Matt Cruz has shared the extension information with you. And we would, at this time, just call for a committee vote to support that extension.
So, move, Mr. Jenner.
Okay.
Roll call?
Mr. Ferenti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sennella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. The next item on the superintendent's report is information that I wanted to give about the lead and copper testing that we had done in all of our schools, actually, last August, the results of which we got in December, and understood that the results were fine, and we had nothing to be concerned with. More recently, we got the actual numbers back and some guidance from the Department of Environmental Protection that showed us we had seven areas that did not actually meet the testing requirements. Those included five... Five cases where flush draws came out accessible... Acceptable, sorry. And two cases where the flush draw continued to be higher than the accepted levels for lead. We had no issues with copper in any areas, but there were those seven cases of concern around the lead. The Department of Environmental Protection advised us to, in five of the seven cases, flush those units for 30 seconds each morning, and that would eliminate the problem. We opted instead to put those units out of commission. And so, we turned off the water to those units and begged them so that students would know that they shouldn't use those pieces of equipment. There were two others that were a little bit more concerning because even on the flush draw, they tested high for lead. That was a water fountain in the Lincoln School down near the early childhood area and a sink in a classroom that's no longer used the way it was originally intended up on the second floor. In both of those instances, the devices had been out of service for a long time. In the case of the water fountain in the early childhood wing at the Lincoln School, the children are just too small to access it, so it doesn't get used. And in the case of the sink at Riviere High School, it's in a room that used to be part of a home ec wing that is now used as a small special needs pull-out classroom. And that sink, in fact, hasn't had a faucet for a number of years. They had to turn on the water feed in order to do the testing. In those two cases, we've decided that we're going to remove those fixtures and put them completely out of commission, not replace them. In the case of the other five, although we were told that we didn't necessarily need to do this, we are opting to leave those devices shut off for the remainder of the school year, and they will be replaced over the summer, which the Department of Environmental Protection has told us is an abundance of caution, which we are happy to exercise. We also had the MWRA back in last week to retest the water sources from those seven... All seven areas, just so that we could have a second reading to ensure that the first reading was accurate and give us enough data to continue our work with the MWRA and the Riviere Water Department to ensure that all of the water access to students is safe in the Riviere public schools.
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Any other members?
No?
Next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the fiscal year 2018 school department budget. Dr. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, again. So, I wanna begin by just giving a brief overview of the budget for the community, the folks who are watching at home, and those who are here with us tonight. First of all, I want to give an update on our enrollment. We do have 350 new students in the district this year compared to last year, which gives us a total enrollment of 7,451. And that is the count of the kids that are physically in our 11 schools in the district. It does not include the kids that belong to us but are... Have out-placed services. Including those kids, we're at about 7,800. So, we are very quickly approaching the 8,000 number for our absolute enrollment. In terms of our English language learner students, that population has increased. We're just under 20% of our students in the district qualify for English language learner services. That's compared to just 9.5% across the state. So, we're trending at nearly double the state number of English language learner students. Our high-needs students are... It's actually, our percentage is lower than the state. 15.3% of our students qualify for special needs assistance, whereas in the state, the average is 17%. And, you know, I think that this number particularly demonstrates the excellent work of our special needs educators who service the kids and help them progress with their individual educational plans and move kids out of special needs status into the mainstream curriculum as quickly as possible. In terms of high needs, we have 60... 61.7, so almost 62% of our kids are categorized as high needs, which means they either live in poverty, have special needs, or access English language learner services. That's compared to just 42% statewide. And for low income, nearly 80% of our students, 79.6% is the accurate number, qualify for free or reduced lunch, which qualifies them as low income. As we all know, and as our budget has felt the impact of the state's change in focus from low income to economically disadvantaged, our number of students that qualify as economically disadvantaged is just under 42%, which is still up from what it was last year. But it's still... These figures accentuate the undercounting of poor kids in the state's new categorization formula. With that said, a brief overview of our funding. I think many people know that our funding comes from two sources. Mainly, actually, three sources, but primarily two. The first is the city of Riviere, where this year, the state has indicated their portion of our funding should be $31,493,771. In addition, the state is providing just under $61 million in Chapter 70 aid to the district, which gives us a total of around $92 million. As the committee well knows, there are services that we provide to the city, such as some budgeting work that we do, some technology work that we do, some work that we do around transportation. And there are other services that the city provides to us, such as snow removal, financing, procurement, other pieces like that. When we negotiate those in-kind services, it means that the appropriated school's budget for this year for fiscal 18 is gonna be $80,213,216. And that is the amount of the funding that the committee is charged with exercising a public hearing on tonight and then voting for in the end. I did wanna point out that, in addition, the school department manages over $20 million in grants and other revenue that we go out and seek and find. And thank you to Matt Cruz and all of the folks in the business office who make it possible for us to manage these volumes of money and the kind of procurement that goes along with that. And also to the folks at City Hall who help us with that work as well. So, where is that money spent? Well, it's really split into two categories. The first is salaried accounts, and the second is non-salaried accounts. So, the salaried accounts are just what they sound like. These are the funds that we use to pay people salaries. And you can see the breakout here. The vast majority in the maroon, 86%, goes to pay the salaries for curriculum and instruction. And that's not surprising. That includes all of our educators, all of our teachers, all of our administrators. All of our... All of those folks fall into that category. Separate from them are the people in my office and the business office. And that's, you know, we're required to report salaries in these different categories by the state, and that's how this falls out. So, what you can see here is it's about 1.5 million dollars that's spent on district administration, 46.7 million on curriculum and instruction, 3 million on supplemental student services. Those are our school nurses and other folks who provide services to students outside of classroom teachers. Under facilities and maintenance, it's just over $2 million. Employee benefits is... Employee benefits is about $780,000. And then we have a paltry $130,000 that we put into our community programs, such as the community school. And, you know, that's where our salaried accounts are allocated. For non-salary, we split out into more categories. And the categories you see here, again, are district administration. So these are supplies, materials, services, things that are not salary, that are spent through the central office. About $600,000 is spent there, just over $3 million in the curriculum and instruction area, almost $4.5 million on supplemental student services. This includes transportation, including all of the buses that pick the kids up in the city of Revere, but also transportation for our special needs students to outside school placements, and that's where the bulk of that $4 million is spent. We allocate, so just under $6 million for facilities and maintenance. That includes all of our utility bills, the gas, the electric, all of those things and all the other things that take care of our facilities. Employee benefits is about $500,000. Regular building improvements, about $800,000. And then the largest piece of the non-salaried account is tuitions out to charters and other schools, and that's about $10 million. Roughly $3.5 million of that goes to charter schools. The remainder pays the special education tuitions of our students who are in outplaced environments. But just so that folks can have an idea of how the money is spent. We are a foundation budget district, which means we don't have a lot of leeway to debate how we should spend our money. Much of it is dictated by what the state mandates us to do in order to provide adequate services to all of our students. But what we did do with some additional funding that we got this year, and I'm very thankful to the Speaker DeLeo and Representative Alice Peish, who worked very hard with us, along with Representative Rosely Vincent and the rest of our delegation, to make sure that Revere had adequate funding. The change to economically disadvantaged left us with over a $4 million deficit, and they have worked strenuously through these first phases of state budgeting to ensure that we had that $4 million that we needed to get back on track from where we lost ground last year in the first year of the economically disadvantaged change that had us losing 17 teaching positions. This year, we were able to put on 18. If we go back to the first slide I showed indicating we have 350 additional students, we should have far more teachers than this and far more other workers than this, but we're doing the best that we can with the budget we have to work within. And so we have 18 new teachers and we have seven total other positions that will be reinstated or created new this year. Last year, we lost six other positions, and this year, we're able to replace seven. So still behind where we should be, but definitely headed in the right direction in terms of adequate staffing in our schools. So that's it for me. I want to also thank committee member Michael Feranti, who chairs the Ways and Means Subcommittee, who was instrumental to me and Matt in the early stages of the budget before we got to the point that we were sharing it with other committee members, and now for the public hearing. And now, Michael, you want to add anything?
Thank you, Dr. Kelly. Obviously, a budget of this size of $80 million, there has to be a lot of thanks sent out to people. And obviously, the biggest one is to Matt Cruz and his office. I'm sure they put hours into this budget, and it's beyond belief of what really got done. Also, a thanks has to go to the mayor and his administration for the Schedule 19. Dr. Kelly, who I understand was up at the state, was at least once a week looking for as much money as she could get to make sure we didn't have any layoffs and add additional. Assistant Superintendent, Dr. Danielle McCob and Josh Vidal, for their assistance. And last but not least, the school committee. We had several meetings in this that were pretty contentious at times, but, you know, seeing that we actually added the jobs that we lost last year, that's a plus, and I think we're going on the right track, and hopefully that we will not have any catastrophes this year and we'll be able to get through the budget pretty good. At this point, I will read the series, the category, and the total amount. And to start the budget hearings, the series 1,000, the administration budget is $2,191,191. So voted.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Just before we move on, I just want to say that if there are members of the committee that do not vote on issues because there are family issues or they haven't benefits through the school committee that they're not eligible to vote on. At this point, the series 2,000 instructional services, $49,812,642. So voted.
Mr. Feranti?
Not voting.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Not voting.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
The 3,000 series, other student services, $7,480,114. So voted.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Not voting.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Series 4,000, operation of plant slash maintenance, $8,96,164. So voted.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Series 5,000, employee benefits and insurance, $1,301,033. So voted.
Mr. Feranti?
Not voting.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Not voting.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Not voting.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Series 6,000, civic and community services, $132,816. So voted.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Series 7,000, building improvements, $840,256. So voted.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Series 9,000, programs with other schools, $10,359,000. So voted.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
The total school committee budget is, be voted on, is $80,213,216. So voted.
Mr. Feranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sannella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Orego?
Yes.
Any members like to weigh in? No?
Well, I just, I'd like to thank Mr. Feranti and certainly Matt Cruz and all of the people who were in there. And, Michael, you expressed it very well. We owe an enormous debt to Dr. Kelly, who led the way with the five district partnership to go in and to lobby for an increase in funds for us, even last week, and all the way up to the very end, and I feel very confident that we'll be able to deliver our usual quality education with the funds that we have. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ty. At this time, the next item on our agenda will bring us into executive session. I have a motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
We will go into executive session with the understanding that we will come back into public session. The public participation agenda item. Any public participation? Go ahead.
My name is Peter Del Greco. I'm a parent of a seventh grader as well as a third grade special needs student in Revere. I'm also the president of Revere CPAC. The reason I'm here, I've had no less than 20 to 25 phone calls about the summer program being cut. When I say cut, the hours cut. It used to be eight to one, now it's eight to 12. A lot of frustration and anger from parents. But the decision it being cut, there was no participation or questions or concerns with the special needs community. We just found out about it maybe three weeks to a month ago.
Maybe we should have the superintendent talk about it.
Yeah, I just have a few things again. So again, it was cut by one hour a day, four days a week, that gives four hours. The real concern is the services that the students will not be getting. Right off the bat, every IEP for small learning group children, all state summer program, four days times five and a half hours a day. No, they all still do. Mine does unless they were rewritten within the last two months. Some were, so I'm sorry. I would say 90% of them still say, sign that say four hours, four days a week, five and a half hours a day. So right there. Also, the services, OT, speech, how are they going to fit those in? Because the school system is still required to do those. So with an hour or less a day, a lot of those, for the most part, they are gotten in the summer, but some depend upon if they're, you know, if one of the OT or speech people are in the summer program and extenuating circumstances, they are still supposed to have those, and just as a community, we just don't see how they're going to fit them in. So there's a lot of issues there. We're just wondering where it came from. I got a quick excuse or a reasoning being they're trying to align all the summer programs. Special education is not aligned with any other programs in Revere. Extended day, busing, all that stuff, and I know the busing stuff has to be separate, which is good, but my point is that that's really not a valid reason, I don't think, as well as the people that came to me with their concerns. So we're just kind of maybe looking for some answers or...
Did you talk to Dr. Vidal about this?
I spoke to him briefly about it, and he is coming to our meeting tomorrow, the CPAC meeting. We're going to in-depth, but the people that came to me, they really wanted me to voice their concerns to the school committee, seeing if you all had part of it or who was behind it and what was the reasoning.
So I'll speak, Dr. Vidal did address the committee before this meeting in our subcommittee meeting, and he shared the rationale behind the program, and you having been somebody who participated in for the last number of years, I don't know how close you were able to get to the curriculum that was offered in those five-hour units, but I know that our staff, when they reflected on the quality of that programming, felt it was inadequate. In particular, they mentioned a 30- to 40-minute breakfast period and a 30- to 40-minute lunch period. So in fact, the students weren't getting five hours of quality instruction that they need and deserve in order to bridge where they leave in the beginning of the summer to where they come back at the end of the summer. So I know that the staff talked about lending some legitimacy to the program by condensing the academic component to a four-hour block, which would be the age 12. And the nice piece about that, about echoing what the other summer programs are doing in all of the elementary schools, is that it freed up some time when all of the kids would be released at the same time, and they could work on some integration pieces that they're not able to do in the special ed summer program when the kids are entirely separate from their models. So the idea was to have a more comprehensive four-hour truly academic block followed by every day, two hours optional to parents, where their kids could work with models, with other peers, who would also be available now because the timing was the same. If the special ed program continued to go until 1 o'clock, the regular ed kids would all be gone, and then there'd be no opportunity for that modeling. And I know that Dr. Vidal has already worked with the parks and rec department. I understood that he had worked with you, but maybe I misunderstood him?
No, no, I was going to elaborate on that a little bit.
Okay.
Again, I spoke to Dr. Vidal. CPAC is going to fund, we're going to try to fund, we're going to try to come up with some program. We're more than willing to help that. What you just told me would have been awesome if everybody else knew that.
Right.
And I do agree with the smaller block and the more quality. I agree with that 100%. And just so you know, I have no skin in the game. My daughter actually doesn't go to the summer program.
Okay.
I'm just as concerned. I don't like to see any services taken away, any hours or anything, especially with the special needs.
Yeah.
But again, the communication, if any of the other parents knew that, I think I wouldn't have been here.
And I think that, you know, one of the things that we struggle with today in the school department is effectively communicating in the age of social media, because the minute you say something to one person, it's viral.
Sure.
And when you're waiting for next month's CPAC meeting to talk to parents and get their input and tell them what your ideas are, they've already heard about it before next month's CPAC meeting occurs. And, you know, I think that we often, I think the school committee will tell you that, they often call me and say, why didn't you tell me about this thing? And I'm like, because it's literally happening right now, you know, and that's... But that's, it's true. It's much, in a lot of ways, communication becoming so much easier than it used to be has made things a lot more difficult to communicate because you can't get it to everybody at the same time.
Absolutely. Especially when services are being cut in this case. I understand we're going for quality rather than quantity. Some sort of formal communications, I think, should have came out.
Yeah.
Because, again, most of the parents think their kids are getting cheated in a way.
Yeah, and you can see why they would. It sounds like it, right? When last year, my child was in their summer school program from 8 o'clock till 1 o'clock, and now this year, I'm getting a lot of saying that they're going only from age 12, I'm going to say, you know, what's going on here? What are you people doing? You know, it's perfectly natural.
If in fact, the quality does get better, which I have full confidence that it will, I believe that's better.
Yeah.
To me, 40-minute lunch, excessive lunch, excessive recess, anything like that, breakfast. Obviously, if we can go into curriculum-based, it would be much better. But again, the communication was very poor in this case, and I think it caused more anguish than...
The feedback is helpful. I think you're right, yep. The feedback is helpful, definitely.
That'll, again, I came for some answers, and Josh will be at the CPAC meeting tomorrow. Expect a large turnout, so...
Great, that's awesome.
Thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
You only create to have two children, I just want you to know.
I have three, there's only two.
You had three.
No, there's only two in the school.
No. I thought maybe you'd want that third so fast.
Thank you, Peter. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is the...
Let's go through the student, to the next item on the agenda, which is the student representative report. Gianni? Since tonight is my final school committee meeting as the student representative, I would just like to take a moment to express my utmost gratitude to Revere Public Schools for 13 years of an incredible education. I truly cannot say enough about the district. A very special thank you to Dr. Kelly, the Honorable School Committee, and Mayor Orego for this incredible opportunity to serve as a student representative for the past two years, and thank you to my family from home watching right now for all of your loving guidance. When I was finishing up middle school at the Romney Marsh Academy, I was adamant about attending a private high school, having received several offers and generous scholarships from various schools. However, the former freshman academy principal at the time, Ms. Terrio, asked me to consider Revere High School as one of my options. I had no interest at first, but after touring the school and shadowing for a day, I decided that I would give it a chance. At the time, I did not realize that deciding to continue my education in Revere would bring forth a plethora of extraordinary opportunities. At Revere High, if you can dream it, you definitely can do it. In my four years, I had a voice and active role in determining the outcome of my education. Starting freshman year, I was able to take AP classes as well as night classes at Northshore and Salem State. Beyond that, I have been able to explore my interests in law and government by having several internships. First, I interned at a reputable law firm in Boston during my junior year. After that, I had the chance to work in Mayor Orego's office for a semester, and currently, I'm interning at the State House with... And currently, I'm interning at the State House with Speaker DeLeo. These have been nothing short of remarkable and valuable learning experiences. My teachers have also been a major part of my positive experience in the school. They have empowered me to be a leader and advocate for my peers. It is with their help that I have been able to serve as the class president for the past three years and helped to bring the Student Senate, a body to advocate for the needs of Revere High School students, back to the school. Thanks to the great work of this school system, I have been well-prepared to head off to college in the fall to continue my education. I am grateful for all that Revere Public Schools and my guidance counselors have done in supporting me to be able to earn a four-year full tuition scholarship to such a prestigious school. These teachers and counselors tirelessly go above and beyond their duties to help their students reach high levels of achievement. The key to continued success for Revere High School and for Revere Public Schools is to utilize authentic student voice for further improvement. In the same vein of democracy, education works best when the beneficiaries are at the forefront of assessing their individual needs to create a unique and suitable education. When working with an organization called Students at the Center Hub, I came across a quote that sums up the importance of student voice. It says, "Fostering student voice, empowering youth to express their opinions and influence their educational experiences so that they feel they have a stake in the outcomes is one of the most powerful tools schools have to increase learning." Once again, I would like to thank Revere Public Schools from the bottom of my heart for all it has done and offered to my peers and future students. For those that are lucky enough to live in Revere, a top-notch public education is very accessible. Thank you once again, and I look forward to seeing all that the future holds for the Revere school system. Thank you, guys.
I guess I can do it.
It's my turn now.
Congratulations.
Man, Arigo, put your eye in his seat.
So I'm not going to put Gianni on the spot and ask him which internship was the best one that he had. He has been a pleasure to work with, and I know that he represents all that is really exceptional about the city of Revere. So Gianni's going to go on to do incredible things, and a lot of the reason why he's going to do incredible things are because, is because of the work that we do here and the work that Dr. Kelly does and all of our great teachers do. So, you know, Gianni's going to do some incredible things, and I tell him to, you know, there was a comment that I'm worried about him taking my seat. I told him to shoot way higher than that.
I know.
He's got Congressman DNA, so, you know, he's going to do great things, and I look forward to, I know we all look forward to hearing about all the great things that you go on to do in life, Gianni. Any other council members? It's getting late. Any other school committee members? Thank you, Gianni.
Well, you know...
Ms. Ty?
What can you say after that beautiful speech? He, there, he's just an extraordinary kid, an extraordinary human being, and I know that we have all been so pleased to be able to work with him and to watch to see what he has done. And I am particularly pleased that when we had here a Student Senate in the 1970s, and then it all fell apart, and Gianni, single-handedly, brought it back and gave students a voice. Single-handedly. And I, for that, not only this generation, but the continuing generation of students will be grateful to you, Gianni. You've certainly made your mark. You're the best.
I just want to thank him for being amented to a lot of kids and, you know, my daughter included. Those things, teamwork is embedded in you, and I want to thank him very much for his years here and look forward to the future. Dream it, do it.
I'm not going to cry. But I did get to meet Gianni when he was in sixth grade, and he would come into the CPAC meetings and help out there. And immediately, you knew what an extraordinary young man he was. And then watching him during his high school years, who is admired by all types of students, all types of educators up here, I mean, there's no other person that can't speak highly of him. I have been so proud to sit here or stand outside with him. When he talks about authentic student voice, I know when it's coming out of Gianni, it is true, it is honest, and there's homework behind it. And I appreciate all the homework he's done through his life to make him this wonderful, wonderful young gentleman that he is, that his mother should, I'm sure, is so proud of, just as we all are. So Gianni, we love you and thank you for all your help here.
We will move on to the next item on our agenda, which is the consent calendar.
Are we going back to executive session?
Okay, there's a motion to go back into executive session. All in favor, all opposed? We will come back for the rest of our regular meeting. We're back, and our next item on the agenda is our consent calendar. Roll call on the consent calendar.
Mr. Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes, but Carol might want it red. No.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is the report of subcommittees. No reports. Old business, no old business. New business. Dr. Kelly?
Mr. Mayor, we would ask that the school committee, having had the opportunity to review the Paul Revere Election to Work Agreement, indicate your support through a vote that you support the Paul Revere teachers and Principal Barbara Kelly and the school council, which has worked on and designed this election to work agreement.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Mr. Chairman, does this coincide with the, it's not really a grant, but the innovative concept of the school?
It does. Yep.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes. Dr. Kelly?
In section C in the new business is the acceptance of a $15,000 Poson Award also to the Paul Revere School, and this is presented to you under the public gifts to schools policy, requiring a vote of the committee to accept.
Motion to accept?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Ferranti?
Yes.
Ms. Gravellisi?
Yes.
Mr. McGuire?
Yes.
Mrs. Rizzo?
Yes.
Mr. Sinella?
Yes.
Ms. Ty?
Yes.
Mayor Arigo?
Yes. Next item on the agenda is school committee interests. We'll waive the reading until our next meeting. motions? No motions?
Wait a minute, did we leave school committee interests? Because I just, I just...
I'd like to give a shout-out to two graduates of Revere High School. One, Jilda Santasuaso Oscealo, turned 100 this week. She graduated from Revere High in 1936.
Wow. Utah. And I... I was in her class. However, I did teach her son, who is currently the chief medical officer at Mass General Hospital. And I was his advisor in College Bowl, which was like an early version of Jeopardy.